I hope everybody had a nice St. Patrick's Day yesterday. This is the prayer about St. Patrick. God, our Father, you sent St. Patrick to preach your glory to the people of Ireland. And by and by the help of his prayers, may all Christians proclaim your love to all mankind. Grant this through our Lord Jesus Christ, your son who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen.
Linda will start, Sal.
Sure. On March 12th, for the Department of Maintenance, I approved an unpaid medical leave of absence for Joan Staley, part-time general communications clerk, switchboard operator, number 1912-1, for the period March 4th, 2025, through April 30th, 2025, for time not covered by accrued sick and vacation leave. On March 14th, for the Department on Aging, I accepted the resignation of Jennifer Shaner, part-time adult day services assistant, number 1041-1, to be effective March 12th, 2025. I also approved a liquor license. We concurred with the Bainbridge Township trustees in not requesting a hearing on the liquor license being requested by Meyer Stores Limited Partnership DBA Meyer Store Parsley Number 02-421515N of intersection of State Route 43 and Service Road Aurora, Ohio. See new 5811144-0615.
Thank you. Item number two, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of March 11th, 2025.
I'm going to approve.
Take it.
Commissioner's delay.
Right.
Commissioner.
I.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Yes.
Morning, Adrian.
Morning, Adrian Gordon, Commissioner's Office. So today's financials include a supplemental appropriation from the Commissioner's Office and the County Agricultural Society Fund, building an improvement expense account. Cash transfers from the General Fund to the Engineers' Office for office expenses per MOU funding agreement allowed for by ORC Section 315.11. And also a transfer from Water Resources from their sewer operating fund to the McCarland Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrades Project Fund for seed money to start the project. Among the encumbrances are travel encumbrances from the Common Police Court to attend the Judicial College Orientation and from JFS to attend the Ohio Job and Family Services Directors Association Training Conference and the National Child Advocacy Center Forensic Interviewing of Children Training. And also then and now from Water Resources to Lake Business Products for copier maintenance payments from August 2024 through March 11th, 2025 that were not previously encumbered. Among the vouchers are $63,721.99 from the Commissioner's Office to Ohio State University for the county's first quarter 2025 program support payment. And also $17,420 from Water Resources to Junction Isle Sales Incorporated for a 2024 GMC Terrain All-Wheel Drive SUV replacement vehicle.
Could you talk about the payment to Ohio State University? Is that for the extension?
Yes, it's for the agricultural program and the various programs that the the extension does at the fairgrounds. And they actually come in at budget time and for the budget hearings and discuss their programs and what their their request is going to be in that. That's what this money supports. They they bill us quarterly.
I'll make a a motion to approve the financials.
So.
Commissioner.
Right.
Commissioner.
I.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Yes.
And then the next two items on the agenda are to approve from the Auditor's Office to accept, execute, and file the monthly statement of county finances filed by the county auditor for the months of April through September 2024 pursuant pursuant to ORC Section 319.35. And then also from the Treasurer's Office for the months of April through September 2024 per that same 319.35 section of the ORC.
I'll make a motion to approve four and five.
Take it.
Commissioner.
Right.
Commissioner.
I.
Commissioner.
Yes.
You don't have to sign all those papers, are you doing?
Uh.
Yeah.
This is like.
Unfortunately.
Oh, God. We we were going to do all the way through January, but we're waiting for either grant of one from the Treasurer's Office. So once that comes in, then we go to. Tell them what's your. And by then we'll have February.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Shane.
Shane Hajar with the Engineers' Office. Items number six and seven go together. The County Engineers' Office is requesting the board approve and execute the mortgage release of sub lot 364 in Canyon Lakes Phase 14B. And item number seven, the Engineers' Office requesting the board approve and execute the mortgage deed for sub lot 391 in Canyon Lakes Phase 14C to be held as a 10% maintenance bond for the Engineers' Office for Canyon Lakes Phase 15.
Shane, can you give me the, what's the backstory on this? Was this a tip agreement or why is there a mortgage?
Uh, by holding a lot, there's no cash in an account. It has to be held in and then released. We hold a a lot as a bond.
Okay.
Um, and the lot that we were holding, they have a buyer. Or so they want to change to a different vacant lot while they're continuing to build out the new phase that was opened up last year.
Okay. Um, I'll make the motion to approve with six and seven.
Yes.
Take it.
Commissioner.
Right.
Commissioner.
I.
Commissioner.
Yes. Is that the last phase?
It is.
Thank you.
We. Yes. That one goes back to subdivision rigs, 1978, I believe.
Wow.
So it's been going on for a while.
Thank you.
Item number eight, the County Engineers' Office requesting the board approve and execute Resolution 25-044 to order the reconstruction of Butternut Road, County Highway 21, including the replacement of structure 0021-00.32 and the resurfacing of sections A through C in Munson Township. This resolution also requests the board approve and execute the title sheet of the plans for the same and further resolve to set the bid opening as Friday, April 4th, 2025 at 10:05 a.m. using BitExpress at the Engineers' Office. Notice of bid openings will be advertised on March 20th and on the county websites.
So the resolution says that lands will be taken relative to the improvements. Can you tell me, does that mean there's eminent domain? What's what does that mean?
We already negotiated with the two landholders, Notre Dame Cathedral Latin and the golf course. The intersection of Butternut and Y Road had Y Road as sort of the primary roadway. You had to stop on Butternut and Butternut is a county road. It's continuous from Mayfield all the way over to Burton. So we're realigning Butternut Road to allow traffic to go from Mayfield to Notre Dame and and beyond without having to go through poorly aligned intersection. And that required us to put the road partially on the Notre Dame's property and partially on the golf course property. Those easements have already been secured and purchased.
Okay, great. I mean, I'm sure Notre Dame probably appreciates the change, I would think.
It will definitely have the most benefit for them, you know, in the short term. Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve a.
So.
Commissioner.
Right.
Commissioner.
I continue.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I am here this morning for a grant we were able to receive through the Western Reserve Area.
Your name.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Jessica Bolt, Director for the Geogee County Department on Aging. I am here this morning for a grant we were able to receive through the Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging to assist Geogee seniors for applying for heap home energy assistance funding. This is a reimbursement grant in the amount of $3,442.12 for the period of September 1st, 2024 through August 31st, 2025. We did receive the grant February 28th of this year. So it rolled in very late from the state. This allows us to be reimbursed when we help individuals apply for the Home Energy Assistance Program as well as providing programs and services, giving information about the program as well as advertising in our newsletters, not on Facebook.
I'll make a motion to approve number nine.
Take it.
Commissioner.
Right.
I.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Two minutes.
Yes.
Are we going to do it?
Morning.
Two minutes, huh?
Two minutes.
Yeah, we got this.
I gotta not ask questions. That's.
All right, Matt Soraki, Maintenance Department Contract Coordinator. I've got number 10. The Maintenance Department is requesting the board approve and execute contract maintenance form number one, increasing the service contract agreement with James W. Ross Incorporated, doing business as SWIFT First Aid for additional first aid kits and supplies, replacement AED pads and batteries as required in the amount of $5,000 for a new not to exceed amount of $15,000. So we had to purchase a bunch of AEDs last year and that took our contract amount up a little bit. So we didn't have enough left to pay for the actual first aid kits and that kind of stuff.
That's what I figured is that that cost was probably more ADD and not Band-Aids.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. I'll make a motion to approve 10.
Take it.
Commissioner.
Right.
Commissioner.
I.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, we can squeeze it. Let's get pretty shocking. We can squeeze them in, right? We got one minute.
We got one minute.
Come on, let's go.
One minute.
I've got no questions on this one, just so you know.
Thanks for coming in.
Charles Teecatch, Maintenance Department. I got number 11. The Maintenance Department is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Phase One Operational Functional Program Architectural Program Scamatic Design Submission Checklist to the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction for review and approval of proposed alterations to the Geogee County Safety Center Visitation Room as required by AOC Sections 5121 through 701G and 4101-1-6.1.26.
I'll make a motion to approve number 11.
So.
Commissioner.
Right.
Commissioner.
I.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks.
That was impressive.
I believe that.
So I even have a motion to. Legal notice.
Don't move.
Take it.
Commissioner.
Right.
I.
Commissioner.
Yes.
And anyone who's offering testimony, because I have to swear them in, right? Okay. Or otherwise speaking at the hearing, please raise your right hand. I mean, whatever you want. Do you swear to testify truthfully under penalty of perjury? Yes.
Do you have, you have copies of the general or? No, that's different.
Okay.
Thank you.
May include it all, just for.
Good morning. I'm Gina Hofstadter from Economic Development. I'm Amy Lynn Mothmackey. Right. Do we need to read the legal notice or we just go ahead?
Okay.
I'm sorry. I wasn't listening.
I'm handing stuff out.
Okay, so we are here to do our first public hearing for our community development block grant program for PY 2025. The application period is coming up in June. And we are eligible to apply for these following grants provided the county meets the applicable program requirements. The first one is the allocation funding, which is the one that we usually do. There is also a neighborhood revitalization grant of $750,000, a critical infrastructure of $500,000, a residential public infrastructure program of up to $750,000, targets of opportunity, which is downtown revitalization. That amount is to be determined. And economic development, which is our revolving loan fund. Everything but the allocation grant is a competitive grant. And like I said, we are eligible to apply provided we meet the program requirements. Number two on the agenda is the national objective. So these programs all benefit low to moderate income individuals and areas of our county, and it is for the elimination of slumming blight. The types of projects that can be funded are demolition of bladed properties, building rehab, historic preservation, street improvements, water facility improvements, flood and drainage, parks and recreation improvements, sidewalk improvements, sewer facility improvements, and public service. Past CDV program performance. Right now, we are going to be going out for bid for a roof for Sugarin Falls Park and roof and windows for three homes on Maple Leaf Residences. Some of our alternates for the last grant cycle were ADA sidewalks, an ADA walking trail at a park, an ADA kitchen and bath, and an ADA bathhouse renovation. Those were applied for, but they were not granted. We could only choose two grants at that time. Other program requirements that we need to do for these are fear housing outreach. We do three programs a year for low to moderate income renters. We also have four meetings. Or we have four meetings annually.
Annually.
Thank you. And we also do, we hand out brochures quarterly to anywhere I can think of to just make sure that the fear housing message is out there. And then we have our second public hearing scheduled for May 20th this year that will allow us to apply for the allocation grant.
So for the allocation grant of the $284,000, I know you said last year you had two recipients. Is there a certain number or it just kind of depends on who applies and how much their projects are?
We can only do, if you are granted under $300,000, you can only do two projects.
Okay.
Anything over that, we're, they're allowed to do three. But we're right at that 284 for like, I think the last three grant cycles.
Okay.
So. And PY 23 is when they started with two. We always did four smaller projects.
Yeah, right, right.
So.
Yeah, because there's.
They did. Exactly. They did change that officially. So this will be our second cycle. Again, keep in mind, this is a two-year grant cycle. So the roof project windows is being, we're finishing that up from PY 23. And then going out.
So the end of this cycle is December 25?
It is October.
October 25.
Yeah, we'll have to have 23 done by October.
And then we'll work on the next.
And then.
Correct.
Yeah. Again, we'll have a workshop the end of this month. You know, we've had outreach and and some really good feedback. It was well attended the last time, so we anticipate that to be the same.
Do you tend to get the same organizations applying year after year? Or do you get some mix as far as?
I think the last go around, and again, we're fairly new in this. I feel like we we definitely reached a larger audience. And again, yes, there are probably five or six that are pretty typical.
Yeah.
Their needs are are great. And, you know, when they hear these, just these programs and it reminds them like, hey, you know, what can we, what can we do? So.
Yeah, they probably, oh, go ahead.
We also think outside the box a little bit because we don't have the low to moderate income census tract.
Right.
I gave you a map that shows we have one. So that that area does not have sidewalks. That area does not have sewers. It doesn't have. So you're limited in what you can do. So we have to think outside of the box as far as trying to go more ADA route or public, public, you know.
Typically, these sewer facility improvements, I mean, these are million dollar projects. We don't obviously play in that arena. So, you know, we're again, $284,000, a lot of effort, but I think for a huge impact on some of these folks that could really use, use funds and have some projects on.
Great. I don't have anything else.
I I think the projects that were chosen last year or the year before, mostly roofs.
Sure.
And the roofs protect the whole bill.
Absolutely. And their investment, I mean, they have, what, I think they're up to about 27 houses. So they're doing some good things in our community for sure. Any comments from? Your gallery?
Anything from the panel comment? Will you swear in?
All right.
I have a question. I'm not giving.
Do I have to swear in for a question or no? Okay. Does anyone else want to have a question just so I can group swear in? Nobody else? I'm just trying to be efficient today. We're fussing through. All right, raise your right hand, Gail. Do you swear or testify truthfully under penalty of perjury?
I do.
Great, go ahead.
So you listed various of funds. Are you applying for all of those?
We have trouble hitting those those competitive grants because of our LMI population. They, areas are able to do an LMI survey, low to moderate income survey and income survey if they think that they can hit that low to moderate income area. But we have one census tract. It is in Middlefield Township that does qualify. But unfortunately, they don't have the sidewalks or the sewers or, you know, those kinds of things that we could do those grants for. So we are eligible to apply, but we do not hit the requirements to apply for those competitive grants.
So the only one we're applying for is the allocation.
No, yes, thank you.
No problem. Do we get any motion, motion to close or anything? Any other comments, questions?
Any other comments or questions?
They're better not be.
We will close.
Speak now or.
We'll see the public hearing at 9:54.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Victims.
Oh, the credit card.
Item 13.
Number 13 is the resolution to approve the fourth amended resolution regarding the approval of using credit county credit cards for year 2025. And this is just to the county engineers office for their.
Is there going to be a fifth amendment, Russ?
Yes. I know that there will be a fifth, and that is for Electric Service Commission to be added. When I went back, they handed me the information and when I went back to them, I said, I mean, this, this, and this. And so they're always having a special meeting today to finalize those, that information to get to us so we can get that through.
So we'll be doing this for six months, I think. I'll make a motion to approve number 13.
Second.
Commissioner.
Right.
Commissioner.
I.
Commissioner.
Yes. Item 14.
And then item number 14 is to approve the and authorize the President to execute the application of the author's ancient permit of use. So the signatures are on fire.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner.
Right.
Commissioner.
I.
Commissioner.
Number 15.
Do you want to come up? Yeah, I was gonna have Adam and we have people from the Department of Mental Health here as well.
I'll say.
Jim Mouser from the Geogee Medical Health and Recovery Services.
Morning. Kathy Johnson, I am speaking as an individual board member for the Geogee County Mental Health Board and Recovery Services. I may be sit on the Suicide Prevention Coalition and the Opia.
And Adam Luskey, Geogee Valakal.
Well, I guess my little background of this is that I came to Christie with this, I don't know, a month ago and said, hey, have we ever tried to establish this hybrid review board? And she said, well, Adam tried to do it last year and it it fizzled out. And so I worked with Christine and and Adam and we made sure we got our paperwork in order. And so here we are today.
I'll make a motion to approve item 15.
Second.
Commissioner.
I guess just a little bit of explanation as far as the scope on this. What is the, this is the the primary function goal is?
Yeah, so I mean, a lot of us have been looking at trend lines for suicide and drug overdose. And so like in Geogee right now, roughly drug overdoses are about a little less than 15 per 100,000 a year. And suicides are a little more than 12 per 100,000, I believe, in a year. Those who go up and down, obviously, this was averages. And that's for 2020 to 2023. But kind of what the state did with this was just look at trend lines, solid volunteer boards. There's no one being paid to do any of this stuff. So the sheriff's office, the example, us, the coroner, Geogee Valakal, I might say us, the, I say Adams Board, but they have a different acronym than I'm going to butcher. And so we kind of worked together to kind of look at those trend lines and see, is there something we should be concerned about or not? And there may not be, and we just kind of do what we need to do. And there may be something where we're seeing more of a trend line. And then we can look at education. We can look at trying to help with the sheriff's office. Is there certain areas we're seeing this in? And so it's kind of just a volunteer effort to kind of help the community if we see something that maybe listed as concerning from that aspect.
I guess it helps us to gather these things to enhance, you know, potentially life-saving services and and go from there.
And my understanding too is, I mean, you look at like demographics, like are we seeing more suicide in the elderly population? Are we seeing it more with teenagers? And then we can, you know, use all of these different stakeholders to work together and target, you know, specific groups that may be particularly at risk. Do you believe that's that's accurate?
Yes. Actually, we have great services in Geogee County as it stands. And this is just something that would enhance what we are doing and bring community leaders together.
Yeah.
So so it would be a collaborative in the county to look at these, these are tragedies, tragic. Absolutely. So, yeah, I think it's going to enhance something that's already.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about, you know, statistics, but these are all real people, you know, there are mothers and fathers and sisters and brothers and friends and neighbors. And they're, you know, they're more than just numbers. There are lives that matter. And I hope this committee would be able to identify needs and work together and and perhaps give some some hope to people that feel hopeless in our county.
Do most of the counties have this hybrid dog?
There's more and more creating them. It just depends on the county where they're at in the process. But I might say it's quite a few of them have created this as just a tracking measure to see. And again, it's all volunteers. So that's kind of the the perk of this is from my perspective, I think, I think I'm assuming they agree as well. You know, the sheriff's office, the coroner's office usually tends to see these things first. We didn't have to react with their information they're providing us. This allows all of us to communicate me a little better, more up to date information as well.
Yeah, and there's there's various statutory appointments that the health commissioner has to make. There has to be a law enforcement representative, a public health official, an executive or director, the executive director of the county's mental health services. So Christine LaCombe, a licensed physician, and then the county coroner can be invited to participate. And then they can also add additional members as well. And and like you said, it's no additional taxpayer dollars, so.
All right, I'm, oh, well, yes.
Yeah, call the question. I.
Yes.
Do we want to do a quick photo? I didn't control them, but we're already.
Hey.
Don't receive.
All right.
Someone want to pull down?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Appreciate your work, guys.
Item 16, Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution 25047, recognizing March 16th through 22nd, 2025 as National Sunshine Week.
Do the ladies want to come up?
Well, Carol, can I take the picture?
Okay.
Come up and testify or?
Well, if you just want to talk about Sunshine Week and the importance of the resolution.
Yeah, well, we appreciate you all accepting our resolution. Sunshine Week is really just a national program to encourage transparency in government and to make it more accessible to citizens in the community. I'll take the opportunity to thank you all for making the meetings more accessible now with the live streaming and the recording, the public comment. I should have introduced. I should have introduced myself. I'm Carol Benton. I'm the president of legal women voters of Giada. That's very helpful, too, as people testify. So I think it's all.
You feel you've gotten good feedback on that?
We've gotten very good feedback.
All right, good time, Mr. DeBoer.
And one thing I'd point out, I don't know if you all look at your recordings at all, but you're getting over two, over a hundred and fifty views a week with the YouTube videos. So obviously, there was an interest among citizens to understand the business that goes on here each week. So thank you for making it more available.
You're very welcome.
I think we have a fancy resolution to sign for you guys.
Okay, so we get a picture?
Yeah, absolutely.
Great.
Yeah, you know, we appreciate the work you do and the observers, the observers are being the observer now with you guys coming up. Is that?
I'm not sure. Yeah, we're gonna report this, but yeah, I'll recognize Gail too. Gail's been observing the board of county commission. I'm sure you guys have seen her here week after week after week, and she does a great job.
She's almost franchise.
Yeah, I mean, we as commissioners have been trying to make these, you know, more transparency efforts and hope that they've been well received by the public and it's good to hear.
I think that's the case. It'd be hard to get a hundred and fifty people in here every week, but they're watching on after the meetings and during meetings. So I think that's great. We're very pleased with that.
I also want to just say that we really also appreciate receiving the agenda in advance. Christine does a great job in getting that out, and I think that's also very helpful.
Okay, yeah, appreciate that feedback.
Anyone in the county or anyone from anywhere request to be on the email list for the agenda, that's fine.
Yeah, we are looking at Surf, a software too that would push out the agenda automatically and let people download it from the website a little easier, so.
I guess I would just add is, you know, we observe entities across the county. I don't know how many in total, Gail, but it's probably well over twenty. And if you all could just encourage others to video and to provide the agendas ahead of time and encourage public comment, I think that would be very well received by the citizens of Georgia County.
Yeah, I personally have been encouraging. I will say it is easier when you're on that side to talk about transparency than it is on this side sometimes. It's a lot easier as a candidate or as a member of the public to want transparency. It's a little harder sometimes, you know, there's uncomfortable conversations and so forth that you know, that makes it makes it harder. But it's something I certainly, I talk to people about all the time. They'll say, well, what do you do about, you know, public comment when people say negative things? And I say, just let them say the negative.
They're taxpayers and citizens.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we want that one? We still have to vote on it?
Is there a motion for sixteen?
I'll move to approve sixteen.
Second.
Commissioner Spilleri.
Hi.
Yes.
Double photo time. As this one goes.
You're just right.
I've taken more pictures in the last two months than I've taken in thirteen years, so I'm gonna pass on a couple of those.
Just rest.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Item seventeen, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution twenty-five zero four eight, honoring Camp Sue Osborne on its fiftieth anniversary.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Spilleri.
Hi.
Hi.
Yes. You have some history on that, though?
I believe it's contained in the resolution.
No, that's the, they are not here today.
Do you want to read the resolution, Christine?
Yes, I can do that.
He has the money.
Yes, I have a copy. Resolution honoring Camp Sue Osborne on its fiftieth anniversary, whereas Camp Sue Osborne is a special camp for special kids, serving individuals with special needs and handicaps. The camp was established in nineteen seventy-five by a mother who wanted her daughter to experience and enjoy the same summer camp activities as all her children. Whereas Camp Sue Osborne was created as a place to share friendships built from moderate and simply have fun. Whereas Camp Sue Osborne offers the children the opportunity to attend a two-week day camp at the Lake County YMCA Outdoor Family Center in Perry, a one-week residential camp at Camp Burry or both. The camp offers a variety of activities, including swimming, fishing, nature walks, arts and crafts, drama, skits, music, dancing, and campfires. Whereas Camp Sue Osborne's first camper, Betty Osborne, was the first of many. Each summer, the camp welcomes over two hundred and fifty campers and is supported by more than a hundred and fifty staff members. This year, Camp Sue Osborne celebrates its fiftieth anniversary and estimates that it has hosted well over seven thousand five hundred campers. And whereas Camp Sue Osborne's success is made possible through the support of the community and the dedication of its staff, several events are hosted throughout the year to generate funding for these four new camps. Therefore, being resolved that the Commissioner's hereby honors Camp Sue Osborne on its fiftieth anniversary of dedication to helping kids with special needs enjoy and experience what summer camp is all about and looks forward to continuing its mission in the future. Be a further resolved that this resolution becomes part of the permanent record of the board commissioners of Jaga County, Ohio.
Great.
Very good important program. We'll move to item number eighteen. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board move into executive session for purposes of considering the purchase of property for public purposes. If premature disclosures of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person those personal, private interest in it adverse to the general public interest pursuant to higher advice code one twenty-one point two-two G two. Do I have a motion?
So it's.
Second.
Commissioner Spilleri.
Hi.
Hi.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Yes.
Return of tax donations.
We're back from executive session and there is action today.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution number twenty-five dash zero four nine, authorizing purchase of property, including permanent parcel numbers ten dash one four three nine hundred and ten dash oh eight five three fifty, located at two one four East Park Street, Charred and adjacent Bankhead Lot. And further authorizing the president of the board to be authorized, directed, and empowered to execute for and on behalf of the board, any and all documents required in connection with the purchase of the property.
So much.
Second.
Commissioner Spilleri.
Right.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Yes.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and encumference and expenditure in the amount of five thousand dollars for earnest money relating to the purchase of property for permanent parcel number ten dash one four three nine hundred and ten dash oh eight five three fifty.
So much.
Second.
Commissioner Spilleri.
Right.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Yes. Item nineteen, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board move into executive session for purposes of considering the employment of a public employee with a county administrator position pursuant to higher advice code.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Spilleri.
Hi.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Nah, I think it's the three of us. All right.
Want to?
Have you?
Kathy?
In at ten twenty-two.
Yep.
Anyone returning? At ten twenty-seven.
We do have action today on item number nineteen, county administrator position. I make a motion to approve the hiring and the appointment of Amy Bevan to the position of county administrator, number one three zero one, to be effective April fourteenth at the rate of sixty dollars and forty-six cents per hour, grade nineteen, step nine. This offer of employment is contingent upon successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions.
Second.
Commissioner Spilleri.
Hi.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Hi.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Well, I'll say, I mean, as anyone who follows this board knows, I'd say we as commissioners don't don't always agree on everything. We can have some good face disagreement about the best path forward for GIV County. But on this decision, we are completely united. There is no debate. I think our decision was was pretty clear, conclusive and unanimous. We had a really strong field of candidates. We had fifty-two resumes for this position. We had six interviews, initial interviews, and then two second interviews. But in that strong field, Mrs. Bevan, she stood out as an exceptional candidate.
Yeah, the process wasn't an overnight thought. It was quite lengthy. We read all the applications that came in, all of us, and had some help with our HR, Kathy Hofstadter, a little bit to guide us along the way. We individually interviewed them and then as a group, we interviewed the top two. And I thought the process was was excellent and we come up with a with a great result, so. And we do have the news release.
Press release, yes. Well, I'll I'll send that after we hear back that Ms. Bevan has accepted the position.
After she accepted.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Item number twenty, board discussion.
I wanted to bring back today the discussion of the multivista contract because we had a lengthy discussion about that last week. And I thought the public might have an interest in knowing what the conclusion of the matter was. At the direction of the board, I did a lot of investigating about whether this is something we needed to continue with or not. I talked with Juan, who is our director of maintenance. I talked with the construction manager from Infinity. I talked with, gosh, our guy from NB five. And the conclusion was by the time this contract ends at the end of April, we feel we will have a good enough record of what's inside those walls that it's not going to be necessary to extend that contract. And so the recommendation that I'm making to the boards to just let that contract come to an end at the end of April. So I don't know that any action needs to be taken unless you want to do something different.
Yeah, I appreciate you looking into that further. Certainly, I flagged it as a potential issue and I agree with that decision.
I am fine with that.
The other thing I wanted to get clarification from you on had to do with security cameras in chambers. I know this has been discussed a couple of months ago and the, my recollection was that the board had agreed for there to be a camera installed outside pointed into chambers. But my understanding is that there was talk about two cameras in chambers. And I just wanted to clarify for the guys at ADP which way you guys want to go on there.
I thought when the sheriff suggested it, he suggested a camera in chambers.
That was not my understanding. It was outside pointed in was my understanding.
I see, I see. Okay.
Want to clarify.
Tom, can you lay in on this?
Chief Rome from the sheriff's office, yes, who recommended one in chambers.
Inside?
Yes.
Okay.
That was my recollection as well.
Okay. So one or two? Because I believe they expect two. Is that correct? They've specified two?
I believe just one.
Okay, because the quote I saw had two. So, okay, anyways, I just want to make sure inside or outside. Inside is good and that's.
And sounds better to me. I mean, that's frosted there. I don't. I'd rather, I'd rather they see what's going on in here.
Okay. That's all I had for discussion this week. I don't know if you guys have anything you wish to discuss.
Ma'am.
Thanks. Public comment? If anybody wishes to speak, state their name and you have two.
South Russell, how's the airport situation going?
It's coming. Should be inviting next week. We'll have some.
Is it in writing someplace, Jim?
Not yet, not yet.
When's it gonna be in writing?
Seven days.
Seven days? We'll have a copy of it next week here?
Should.
How will we know?
Show up and find out.
We'll be here. Thank you. It's been resolved, though, correct?
Still in the process.
Well, then how can it be resolved but it's still in the process?
I still got like twelve more hours today, plus six more days.
We'll hear next week. It'll be interesting. Thank you.
You're welcome. Go ahead.
And you're just sitting and talking as Joe Lotto from Muntz Township. What I'm about to say is gonna sound like bragging to another pilot, but it's not intended for that. It's trying to give some background to the weight of my words, if you will. I've been a pilot for sixty years. I've done everything from, been with the FAA, worked every airport around the Cleveland area. I've got about seventeen thousand, well, I've had more than seventeen thousand of hours in airplanes. And I've been in a management position in a number of companies around Cleveland and have done probably most of my flying in business jets around here. So I feel a little bit qualified to make statements regarding the airport. With that said, I think it becomes obvious I'm a friend of the airport to start with. I'm in favor of airports and aviation. And the little kid airplane has always been that. But I've also been a manager and a business person in aviation. And I read an article in the Maple Leaf this past week. And I've got seven pages of questions and comments about what's going on. And I know we don't have the time for that right now, but I've got a few questions and first of it is, is that airport manned twenty-four seven?
I don't think so.
How is it manned?
I think the director, Rick Lammer, he's either twenty-four or thirty hours a week. And I don't know what days. I don't know if he comes in every day or not.
Okay, well, that brings into, and I'm taking stuff that I've gotten on the Maple Leaf. How many landings occur at the airport?
I don't know. I'm here.
Is there a means of logging it? Is there somebody, if somebody's not there twenty-four seven, how can you tell? How much activity you have? Is there, I'm sorry, not logged, okay? So this is a report. Are there landing fees assessed to tenant airplanes or transient planes? And these are business questions, not necessarily airplane questions. And the reason I bring that up is I see this in the Maple Leaf that all these revenues that are being generated go to the airport authority, I understand, but I don't know what their authority actually is. And yet I don't see any definition of how we keep track of these revenues. Fuel sales, four in six. Six dollars a gallon for aviation. I don't know what the actual cost is, but I heard six dollars a gallon. It sounds outrageous to somebody paying two ninety-five or three dollars, but in the aviation area, it's not, it's not unusual. I paid that much for, or you think aviation is a trig fuel. I've spent a lot more than that per gallon. Uh, I've spent a lot more than that per gallon many, many times years ago. So we have, I guess what we're doing, we got a lot of money. I don't know how much coming in, I feel all kinds of numbers. Six hundred thousand dollars in the F A A, one point two, one point three, one point three three from New York County. And the first thing that hits my mind is, what's that money being spent for? And I, I fear, and again, I don't have the authority to go around asking questions, but from a forty-year resident of a job there in Muntz Township, I'm a taxpayer. I'd like to know what, what's going on here. And I don't see anything that gives me a warfuzzy feeling about where my one point three million dollars is going. Or one point two or whatever it might be. I went out to John County Airplane, I've been in and out of that airport many, many times over the years. My best, my best buddy has built two airplanes there, so I hang around at that airport more often than say the average person does. I will be the first to admit, it needs some improvement. One of the things that's cooking right now that I, I have a little bit of a problem with is we've got a grant coming, correct me if I'm wrong, a grant coming from the F A A, six hundred thousand dollars or something like that. For the taxiway.
Well, three weeks ago, we signed for, six, three, four weeks ago, we signed for three point one million dollar for the taxiway and lighting. The commissioner's, uh, uh, part was one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars.
Wow, that's, that's more than I heard about. So my question here is, and I talked to the airport manager, I guess, is that his title, Rick Blamer?
Yeah.
Airport manager. I says, what are you gonna do with it? And they're going to run the taxiway to match the existing runway. Which is thirty-five hundred, am I correct, thirty-five hundred feet?
I think that's correct.
About sixty-five.
Okay. So. I read through the Maple Leaf and I hear about all of this built for the future or all these businesses that are coming in. If you've been out in Middlefield over the last twenty years, you'll see quite a bit of improvement. There are businesses that are popping up out there. Are we going to live with a thirty-five hundred foot runway if we're going to attract businesses? I, I'm here to tell you, no. Uh, before this is, I read in the, in the paper that, uh, we have, uh, jet comes in and drops somebody off and picks them up and off they go. And it sounds like we have jets coming in and out there all the time. I'm qualified as a captain and, and more than half of those in business jets. And I'm here to tell you, they go into Georgia County Airplane with a jet airplane, first of all, requires one or two specific airplanes and ideal conditions. We have instrument approaches that would not allow an average jet airplane to land there. For business, period. So my thinking is, why would we spend all this money on a taxiway that in one, two, five, ten, whatever your future, we're gonna need a longer taxiway? Why would we not look at the future and put a taxiway into whatever we think we can develop out there for a runway? And say, leave with a thirty-five hundred foot runway until the county decides to extend the runway? I hear, um, the airport is not a viable business, it's not an asset to the communities. You can't, you can't recover a, a balance sheet that shows that the airport is paying for itself. Well, in forty years, I don't have any children, but I've been paying school taxes. Now you're showing me a, a balance sheet where the schools have generated this much money for the average person. It doesn't, you can't do it. But you talk to anybody, the schools are an asset to our, our, uh, county because that's where people want to come and live. I believe the airport is the same thing. It's not something particularly in a small airport, try and get bigger. It's not something that can generate a balance sheet with, with, with black numbers on it, particularly right off of that, and perhaps never. But as, as my feelings are, the airport is the responsibility, the airport authority, manager, whatever, and Georgia County. We both work together on it. But I see all this money being spent and I don't see, and I haven't, I'm not privy to all of the information that the rest of the world has. I do not see a plan, an idea, a sketch on the back of an envelope or anything that says we are looking for the future, we're gonna do this. I hear a hangar in a pilot lounge. What was it, Taj Mahal, with, with one of the commoners in the May paper said it's a hobbyist airport? We're gonna build a Taj Mahal for the hobbyists? At, at my mo, at my expense? I don't think that's quite fair. So while I'm, and like I said, I've got a ton of questions about what's going on and I don't have the depth of knowledge that's required to do it.
Well, they have, they have, I think they have a meeting, uh, once a month and last night.
I, I see it's on the eighth or something like that, but yeah, I'm gonna go.
And please go and ask your question.
But here's, here's what I'm saying, you're saying that you're gonna make a decision in a week.
Yeah.
And I think you guys are far shooting from the hip. I really don't think that you're doing due diligence on this thing because show me right now, you're ready to do it in a week, show me a plan of what's intended. Who's, who's looking at the long-term, uh, actions in this, uh, this airport here? Well, reasoning.
I, I'm gonna stop you there, cause I, I'm gonna disagree with you, Mr. Otto, that, uh, there isn't any.
There's what?
I, I, I mean, I have. I said, I'm gonna disagree with you that there's, there, there, what you're saying is not, not correct.
Okay, so.
Well, there, they have a five-year plan within their, within their, their planning that the airport authority has. As far as.
Is that available to us?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
Well. It, it, as far as the outrageous amount, I don't know when's the last time you looked at construction of hangers and hangar space. But one point three million dollars is a fairly good price to pay. And in reality, if you pay attention to the details, that one point three, we're going to receive back almost six hundred thousand dollars. That's gonna be credited back from the F A A on that. So you're looking at building all those hangers and improving things, and you just said needs improvement. So you're gonna be able to do that for half of the price. And with what you're saying, that there's so many other improvements that were needed, was is that we're investing in so many other things in this, in the, in this county and putting money into so many other things. We've got a responsibility, we've got a county airport. But yet we're allowing that airport to basically go unfunded to a certain degree based on the very minimal number of, of things that they have to be able to generate money. The hangar space is something that from now for years to come, they will be able to generate income and pay back whatever the, the, the initial investment is, especially in this case that they're looking at where the F A A is going to cover half of that. F A wouldn't do that without it being in an approved plan. As far as the runway extension, is they have already had discussions with the property owners at the east end of the property that that would be something, but the reality is, is the taxiway for what they have right now will definitely increase the safety of that airport to make it much more usable as traffic has increased because of the other hangers. And they're trying to continue to build this. As far as the fuel farm that they've got there now, which is twenty-four hours availability, they can, they can clearly show you records of the fuel use and fuel consumption of how it has grown since they've made that investment into it. So in fairness to what you're saying, I think that you've got a, you, you've got the ability of, of having a lot of good people down there that will give you those facts. It's a public meeting that I would strongly recommend for you to go to it. You know, before coming in here and throwing a lot of that stuff out there, that your money, because I will tell you there is a lot of stuff that I don't agree with that money is being spent on. Nobody is in here hollering about all these overages and what that courthouse is costing us. And, but yet we're looking at an airport that is going to bring money into our community, but that, it seems like nobody is, nobody is questioning some of the things that probably should be questioned or not even questioned, but just of the concern. So we're okay spending, you know, what, what we've probably paid in overages, we've exceeded what we're looking to just basically put that airport in a good position. You know, so, so that, that's why I'm just saying that I, um, I feel that there's a lot of misinformation of, of what you may be being told or believing, just the information that you're not receiving. But I think that if you really go and take a deep look at it, there is a plan in place and they're trying their best to work with what they have to, to make the improvements.
Anywhere? Okay. Just to respond to you, a couple of things, I don't know that you actually were listening to what I said. And the reason I say that is I had no issues about whether it was a one point three or three point three per hangar or anything like that, that was not the issue. My issue was, I don't see a plan where anything's going on. And if you, and, and of all the other stuff, whether it's the courthouse or anything else in, in, you know, Georgia County, that's nothing to do in my mind with the airport, we're talking about the airport. And somebody has, uh, uh, shells of fuel, yeah, I could read a meter or two, it's easy enough to do. And I, I log in, I have to, if you're following the, uh, F A Rs, you're logging that because they want, uh, the, the safety of, of that fuel to be assured. The same thing with the taxiway, there is, I'm in very much in favor of the taxiway. Right now, you may not understand this, but without the taxiway, an airplane wants to take off, it's gotta go out to the runway itself, taxi down there, and there may be another airplane coming in to land. And they're both on this, oh, on the same runway. Uh, I witnessed the U S air land at Los Angeles, uh, International land on top of this new airplane. I watched it happen, I watched the fireball. I can tell you about the hazards of an airplane being on the runway that's gonna be there to take off. I am strongly in favor of the taxiway. But let me talk about the five-year plan. A five-year plan in aviation is, is, it's like, what are you gonna do this weekend kind of a thing? I'm talking about twenty years, you're building a community, building a facility for the community, you're not thinking five years down the road, you're thinking twenty years down the road. And why put a thirty-five hundred foot taxiway in when you can make it a four thousand foot taxiway instead of putting it in and not doubling the price to exceed another five hundred? Doesn't make sense. I, well, you tell, you tell me that I should dig into this. I just, I just got it last Saturday in the Maple Leaf.
I, I think the other part of it that you've got to realize is, is you just, you just said it yourself. What the cost of us putting that taxiway in at this point is so, such a, a minimal amount of money that if we did get to the point to be able to extend it to four thousand, then all we're basically doing is, is, is completing additional five hundred rather than thirty-five hundred that we already have built in. So I disagree with you and it's just like any, any construction project, if you can start to get to that point of utilizing those costs and utilizing those dollars of savings to build that infrastructure of that base. And we've got thirty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred feet of taxiway. And we get to that four thousand, we're only gonna have to add five hundred feet. To me, that's a deal when we put in a thirty-five hundred foot taxiway that right now, as of once it's completed, we have rendered so much more safety to that airport. And then let's look at the, 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 the next step of moving forward to do this. But to say that that's, that you want, listen, everybody's got a dream. I, I wish we had a ten thousand length airport. But the reality is, is, is in the infrastructure of what there is, we can get four thousand out of that. But there, it takes additional steps. That's something that the board has been working on, they've made, they've made contact with the property owner. He's already, you know, has, has, has considered to, to, to do something at some point. But we have to take the steps that are available. We cannot apply to do certain things through the F A A that we're gonna get grant money for without that infrastructure being in place. And right now for us to qualify for that taxiway, we needed to get it based on what we had of actual length. So for me to tell you, go and try to put in a thirty-five hundred foot driveway for about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, let me know how that works out because it doesn't. And we're getting, we're getting a, a deal to add a tremendous amount of safety.
I, I will say, I did ask the airport for some sort of business plan or strategic plan, um, as far as the future of the airport. And they have not provided me anything. I mean, I, I just wanted a simple.
I don't get it, no, I supposed to get.
It's a good question. I mean, I just want a, a, a simple like business case for why this hanger makes financial sense. Because essentially they're saying they are going to, uh, receive rental income and then they'll have more revenue in order to maintain their existing hangers. And I said, okay, great, like, show me the numbers and I have yet to, to see anything. Um, you know, instead I see like misinformation in the paper that I've never been to the airport. So I mean, I, I, you know, I need a fax and figures and for whatever reason, the airport has refused to provide anything.
But, and, and, let me, I, I need to respond. Uh, and I, I agree, I, I was in air carrier operations and spectrum with the F A A, so I'm familiar the process that the F A A uses, I'm quite familiar, not specifically in a building that taxi, but I understand how the F A A works. But in response to that, let me put it this way, I, I'm gonna use goofy numbers. Let's say thirty-five hundred feet of taxiway and we get it for a dollar a foot, so we paid thirty-five hundred dollars. And if we run it out to four thousand feet, we pay four thousand dollars. Or we put in thirty-five hundred feet and a year, two, three years later, do you think we're gonna get that extra five hundred feet per dollar a foot? Isn't it gonna happen? You know that, I know.
But the reason that we can't.
I did not interrupt you, Commissioner. Please allow me my time. In response to you, um, Commissioner, what value do you, and I, I got this from Rick Blamer, what value is there in you visiting that airport? As opposed uh, to having a, a, a qualified person who knows aviation airplanes go visit and report back to you? It's much, you're an attorney, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. It's like me trying to know the intricacies of the law. That you guys don't have to necessarily know how an airport works, but you have to have the people, you have to be a good enough manager to get the people in there to give you the information. Just the same as I can't go into a courtroom and profess to know law, I would need somebody like these people. That's right. It's real simple to me. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um. It, it, to get back to what you're saying is the, the, the four thousand foot to be able to just do that? It can't be done because we don't have, we don't own that property at this point to be able to make it four thousand. I agree with you, if, if we had that property, let's make it four thousand and be done with it. But we're taking the steps that are available, the programs that they have available when they come in to be able to maximize what they have available to them. And right now it's thirty-five hundred feet. So they've had, they, they were able to get enrolled into that program for the taxiway, for the thirty-five hundred foot taxiway, that that's what they were able to get. But in order for us to get to the four thousand, they would have to acquire the property at the east end of the, of the, um, runway, which is privately owned right now by, by a, a homeowner there. It's got a small farm there. And that's what they have been in discussions with them to be able to do that. And I think that that was one of the goals also that we had looked at is, is, is let's make an investment into that airport with that one point three, they're going to be returned, say that almost six hundred thousand dollars. Then the airport board has dollars available to be able to do that. And we made a good investment of, of dollars into an operation that is constantly lagging behind with dollars because what they're basically doing, they have been very, very, you know, underfunded because of the fact that they are based off of very, very, you know, the, 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 the amount of spaces that they have there and what did some of the maintenance over the years that they have had to do, they have done on their dime of what they've collected. So they've never really been able to create this huge nest egg of money to be able to move on some of these projects without the support from the commissioners. It's just that simple.
A lot of words for something that simple. Let me, let me respond if I may. Uh, it started off, it was the F A was the problem with the taxiway and how it's, or the property ownership. Now the airport diagram that Rick Blamer showed me when I went out to visit him, showed that, you know, the extension for the runway was airport property, but it, they didn't have the money to run the runway out. The problem that what, when I, when I mentioned to him, if you're gonna build hangers, why not build T hangars? The problem that what, when I, when I mentioned to him, if you're going to build hangars, why not build key hangars down on the south thousand site? He said, we don't own that property. But he said they had, you, they own the property for the taxiway. But I'm missing something. Now, I, and, and maybe, maybe he's wrong. I don't know. But I'm just going by what an authorized person says about the airport. And, and this, this says the whole thing. It's easy. And, and I, I say this. Commissioner, with all due respect, I, I'm not here, I don't have a skin in the game, any, at all. I, I just happen to love airplanes. I want this airport. I want. And I, I, my goal is I would like to get back into being a ground instructor. I'd like to see a formal flight school after. I don't need the money. It's not that. I just love teaching. I spent thirteen years as a simulator instructor. I love teaching. I love airplanes. I want to see it. If I had a student, I had to go into that now and sit around that table. And fourteen other guys are sitting around talking about what they did the last weekend and I'm trying to do pilot training, room. Have the, the information and quiet that they can talk and not be interrupted by who dated who last weekend or kind of that. I am very much in favor. My problem is. I. You guys are making the decision. I don't, I don't think you have the ammunition to pull the trigger. I, I really don't. And I've been to the rodeo a couple of times. It's not somebody that just came in off the street and saying, geez, what's wrong here? I see what's wrong. And like I said, I could spend the next two hours with you guys talking about. You know, we don't need a lot of words, you know. The taxiway period. What's the problem? Did anybody look into it? Did anybody look into what the, nobody has, I don't see any evidence and they may have. And you say, go find it. That's what you guys are supposed to be doing, not me.
Well, thank you for your comments and speaking about time.
I, I guess I'm finished.
Everybody, everybody had two minutes. I think you exceeded your two minutes just a little bit.
I was told that I had time where I would have stopped.
Okay, well, we were supposed to have a timer, but we didn't have it.
But.
I kind of had a feeling.
You had a feeling?
It's going to be a little long.
But, you know. I think any of us will sit down and have a cup of coffee with you. I don't know about six hours though.
I'm sorry?
Six hours is a little long. To have coffee.
Well, I'm saying, you know, I, I mean, I, I can do that. I can put a lot of words on it. They can run out to twelve hours. No, but I, I'm serious. I'm not, it's, it's not in my mind. It's not a bell. It's not a bell. I am very much in favor of the airport and very much improvements in it. I, I think safety is the first start. Taxiway, maybe weather. I, I'm certified weather by the way as well. Uh, a, a weather observation station and not just the wind speed. You know, the university has a helicopter there. They would love to have a qualified weather station there. There's no question about it. All, I'm in favor of all of that stuff. A nice pilot lounge where, where company can come in with their King Air and the pilots have a, a room to go relax while their boss is out, you know, making millions. I'm very much in favor of the airport. And anyway, boss, I want to see you plan where my money is going.
Thank you for coming in today. Appreciate it. And what's your name?
Diane Jones, Auburn Township. And before the Muntzen gentleman departs. Um, many of us would be grateful again to hear his name. Um. If you would be so kind to repeat that and perhaps spell it.
Okay, I'm, I'm hearing you.
It's all right. I will speak louder, just grateful that you came in. And wonder if you would clarify for many of us by repeating your name again. We know your.
Oh, okay, okay.
Listen, but just, you know, uh, repeat it again and present it correctly so we don't, we don't budge it up and, and.
Okay. I go by Joe, but the name is Joseph. Last name is Otto, O T T O, Capella, Calendron, O T, Oscar Tango Tango, Oscar.
You said it was a.
You need the address?
No, no.
Oh, you don't want to knock my mailbox, obviously.
She's not going to.
But I'll, I'll give anybody my phone number.
Just need to give the information correctly. So that there isn't a silly reason to take dumb fault for the information that is presented. Is, is that.
You want my phone number too?
A big part?
My phone number.
Maybe not an open session. This is recording. Let's move on to the next question.
Present that afterwards.
Okay.
Yeah, you two can get together after the game.
You guys can get a six hour coffee.
Right.
Um, I would like to request the news release and could you spell, talk about spelling? Um, the new county administrator's last name.
B E V.
B.
Yeah, B is in break. E is an elephant. V A N. It's pronounced B Van.
B Van, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And Gail, could you give me your email address after we conclude? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And then I have one question, just to clarify all this conversation. In, it was my understanding that the taxiway. Has already been approved, that that is not something that is under consideration. What is under consideration, am I correct? Is the hangar project and also what happens to the one point three million, am I correct in that?
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Anastasia Nettles, Sugar Valley Times. I'm a reporter. I want to ask Commissioner Spitter Raylee, um, you said no one is questioning the things that should be questioned and. Uh, you don't agree with things that are being spent on. So can you talk about that?
I'm seeing that the public is, is not coming out in, 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 in. In what, you know, Mr. Otto wants to come in question. Uh, one point three million dollar, um, amount that we. Unanimously approved in twenty twenty-four. For the airport. When you look at what the overruns have been at the, at the courthouse and what the. What that project alone has costed this county taxpayers. I think that, um. We want to look at apples to apples and apples to oranges. I think that, um, we're trying to do, I guess, a little bit of everything for everybody. And we're responsible for all of the buildings. We're responsible for all of these different locations. We helped the fairgrounds, we helped the courthouse, we helped the, all these offices that you see here. Continue to move forward with the Department on Aging to get a new senior center. We're just. Going to be investing millions of dollars into a, uh, youth home. So. Why is it that? We're neglecting an airport. That. Has the ability to bring community economic development back to. The community and the county. Yeah, but yet we're investing all of these dollars. But yet, the county airport seems to get shuffled to the back.
So you said that there is things being spent on that you don't agree with?
Yes.
So what is, what are those things?
I think that one of the things that we shot down was the showers, you know. The showers, but it's just like last week, the whole discussion with these wires and all of these different. Uh, things that are, that are going on that are hundreds of thousands of dollars of additional costs that. We should have had that information when this was originally planned.
When what was?
The courthouse. So, and it just continues to, to come up to us, continues to come up to us. Continues to come up to us for more and more of these change orders. So it's like. Who, you know, I don't hear the public coming in here, you know, like Mr. Otto, basically crying to us about. The hundreds of thousands of dollars of changes, but all of a sudden the airport. Somebody that I'm disappointed is, as a, as Mr. Otto stated, he's an aviator and an interest in this and by his own words says that. It's disgusting to go to the flight center that they do have there that he wouldn't want to be there. Or I got news for you. The only way that that improves is with us making an investment in that airport and changing that. Well, I'm confused because. You're saying one thing. But then you're saying another. That's not true.
But my, well, my solution is the people using the airport should pay for the airport. That's my solution. So there are, there are other ways. That the airport could be improved that doesn't involve taxpayer money. And I mean, I don't think it needs to be an either or. You either criticize what's going on in the courthouse or you criticize the airport. I think I've been eating off the whole menu and criticizing everything. Looking into where, where we're spending all of our taxpayer dollars. I think that's our job to, to look critically at these issues.
Okay. Any other public comment? I move, Richard?
Second.